Call the meeting to order. This is the November voting meeting of the Frankfurt City Board of Commissioners. Today is November 21st, 5:00 p.m. I'll ask our clerk to call for the roll.
Commissioner Rosen.
Present.
Commissioner Unger.
Present.
Commissioner May.
Present.
Commissioner Waldridge. Mayor Wilkerson.
Present. And we do not have anyone for the invocation. We'll rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do you have any ceremonial or recognition? Anything anyone wants to celebrate?
Well, happy Thanksgiving is all that comes to my family.
Same. We're thankful for our staff.
That's good.
Any citizens' comments? None? All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one are the minutes from the work session on October 10th, 2022, and the regular meeting, October 24th, 2022. Item number two is the Wilkinson and Olive Final Balancing Change Order. Staff is seeking approval from the Board of Commissioners for the final balancing change order of $15,477 for the Wilkinson and Olive sanitary sewer replacement project. It's been completed. The main cause for the extra work or remediation, there was a sinkhole, some other existing items that went up in cost. Item number three, staff is seeking approval from the Board of Commissioners of the proposed rates for the 2023 Parks Department. These are rates for our youth athletics, picnic shelters, athletic field rentals, the aquatic center, and Jennifer Hill Golf Course. For 2023, the Parks Advisory Board has reviewed and discussed the rates and feels that it should remain the same. And the only thing that would be raised a dollar is for the water aerobics from $1 to $2 to participate. Item number four, the Jennifer Hill Tennis Court Rehab Project. Staff is seeking Board of Commissioners approval to move forward with the bid to renovate Jennifer Hill tennis courts and for the mayor to sign all related documents. This project was listed on our Parks Master Plan as well as our strategic plan. It's really important for the community. After advertising the bid, we received one response from Tennis Technology at a bid cost of $189,500. There will be a contingency of about $100,000 to be included for any unforeseen issues. And, you know, I know everybody in the community appreciates BOC granting approval previously to expend the one-time funds to get this done. Item number five, staff is requesting approval from the Board of Commissioners to award a contract to place economics of Washington, D.C., to complete an economic impact study to quantify the benefits of historic preservation for the city of Frankfurt. In February 2022, the Board of Commissioners authorized the application of a certified local government subgrant from the Kentucky Heritage Council in the amount of $24,999 with a local match of $20,001 to complete a study of the economic impacts that historic preservation brings to our community. Item number six, staff is requesting approval from the Board for an agreement with fire training associates for the purposes of teaching a Strategy and Tactics for Initial Company Operations, or STICO course. Our fire department will host the course this year, as it will allow also more of our staff to attend. Total cost is $4,695, and funds were budgeted in the fiscal year '23 budget. Item number seven, personnel actions. We are accepting the retirement of Eddie Wiley in the Public Works Floodwall Division on November 30th, 2022, as a heavy equipment operator and authorized payout of accrued leave. We are also accepting the promotion of Brandon McLean in the Public Works Floodwall on November 15th, 2022, promoting from senior tech to heavy equipment operator. We're also accepting the resignation of Josh Skaggs in Public Works on November 3rd, 2022, as a senior tech and authorized payout of accrued leave. Also, accepting the resignation of Ivan Robinson in the Police Department on November 10th, 2022, as a patrol officer and authorized payout of accrued leave. We're also accepting the resignation of William Yancy in the Sewer Department on November 8th, 2022, as a plant operator one. And accepting the resignation of Jared Rotus in the Fire EMS Department on November 23rd, 2022, as a firefighter two and authorized payout of accrued leave.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion to approve the consent calendar. And second, Commissioner Unger. Any discussion? Before you call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Rosen.
Yes.
Commissioner Unger.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Yes. And that motion carries. We'll move on to boards and appointments. The only one this month, Architectural Review Board, the appointment of Rebecca Warren Turner, replacing Tom Midkiff, with a term expiring September 12th, 2025, and this is representing the preservation sleeve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve. Commissioner Unger, second. Commissioner Rosen, any discussion on this?
She looks very qualified to be on the board.
Yes.
That's her too.
So no other discussion, I'll ask our clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen.
Yes.
Commissioner Unger.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Yes. And that appointment happens. And moving on to action items.
First, we have a second reading. It's an ordinance rezoning a portion of the property located on Versailles Road with the address of 260 Versailles Road, more specifically described as PVA map number 08500021, from planned commercial district to highway commercial district. This ordinance approves a zone map amendment for the property with the address of 260 Versailles Road, more specifically described as PVA map number 08500021, for planned commercial district to highway commercial district.
Motion, Commissioner Unger, to approve this second reading?
Yep.
Second.
Second, Commissioner May. Is there any discussion on this second reading?
Just want to offer that I think this is a great example of rezoning, supporting business attraction and retention, and adaptive reuse of the old Sears building, and we're certainly happy to support Steel Blue Case locating here in Frankfurt.
Yep, that's good.
This is in full vote, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Oscar Clark to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen.
Yes.
Commissioner Unger.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Yes. And action item number two, another second reading.
An ordinance establishing procedures for acquiring vacant and abandoned property within the city of Frankfurt and transferring it to useful ownership through the creation of the Frankfurt Neglected Property Development Program. This ordinance establishes procedures for purchasing vacant and abandoned property within the city of Frankfurt and transferring it to useful ownership through the creation of the Frankfurt Neglected Property Development Initiative.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve this ordinance. And is there any discussion?
Thanks to staff and everybody for working on this.
Thank you, Eric.
And good stuff, gonna be great. I hope I'm still sitting up here when we come back with the first property to deal with.
Hopefully soon, and thank you, Eric, and thank you, Laura Ross. And I'm excited about this. I think this gives us a tool that we need to help move some of these, to accelerate some of these properties being redeveloped. And I'm excited to see what we can do with this. Any other discussion?
I think it'll be good.
Yes, city manager?
I just want to also add, this is part of our strategic plan that the BOC adopted in February, and just shows we're working hard to get those items completed and focus on the areas that the community wants us to focus on.
Call for a vote?
Commissioner Rosen.
Yes.
Commissioner Unger.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Yes. And that is adopted.
Yay.
Now, we're going to action item number three, a first reading, which is seeking a sponsor. Commissioner Unger will sponsor this.
An ordinance amending City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Section 36.133, regarding the transient room tax. This ordinance amends City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Section 36.133, governing the transient room tax, to provide a definition of rent that includes amounts charged by those that facilitate the rental of accommodations, include RV parks and campsites in the list of accommodations to which the tax applies, and provide that the tax does not apply to accommodations supplied for a continuous period of 30 days or more.
Any discussion on this first reading before we bring it back next month?
I think it looks good. I know it is a 3% plus 1% tax, and I think it'll be effective, and I'm glad it's been able to be expanded to more properties, or types of properties.
Changing the world here, we're adapting, and the state's adapting, we're just going along with it.
The state's adapting, yes.
Right. No other discussion, we'll move on to action item number four, another first reading. Sponsor, first reading, sponsored by Kelly, sorry, Commissioner May.
An ordinance amending the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Section 52.02C, relating to connection charges. This ordinance amends Section 52.02C of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances regarding sewer connection charges to delete subsection 1 regarding single-family residential tap fees and update the capacity fee schedule to include a $1,005/8 inch residential meter capacity fee, and to include various other meter sizes and accompanying capacity fees currently being charged.
Any discussion on this action item? I would like to say, this is something that I think one of our goals is to encourage more residential development, and I'm excited what we're doing here. I think it's just normalizing and making a single-family sewer tap fee the same as multi-use or townhouse. Is that correct?
So actually making townhouse multi-use the same as single-family.
So we're lowering the multi-family townhouse from $2,192 to $1,000 to match the $1,000 tap-on fee for residential. So we're lowering this across the board, which I think is going to make us more competitive with our surrounding counties. Hopefully this encourages more development.
And I see that Catricia maybe has joined us. Catricia, can you hear us?
Commissioner Waldridge.
Can you hear me? Fingers crossed.
Yes, we can hear you.
We can't see you very well, though. Just the top of your head.
Yes, sorry, working from a cellphone because this laptop is, I guess it's on its own, I can't deal with the VPN right now. So I apologize, it's an odd view, it's from a cellphone that's plugged into the wall.
Okay, well, we're glad you're here.
You're joining us, we're on action, we're well...
And Commissioner Waldridge, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we do, for you to be able to count for a quorum in the voting, we have to be able to see you, and your hand is lovely, but I think we have to be able to see part of your face if you can.
Sorry, I have to bend over this phone.
I'm sorry about that, thank you.
That counts.
I think we've got it.
Okay. Half of it. Now we can see. But we'll move on to action item number five. Unless you want to wait a second. Can you hear us, Commissioner Waldridge?
She got disconnected.
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I'll just listen in, I don't have to vote, I'm fine.
Mayor? Yes. Quick point order for clarification on that. If, she just needs to be seen when she's making the vote and/or speaking?
To participate in the discussion, yes. She has to be on screen, able to be seen and heard to participate, speak, and vote. Does that make sense? Is that what you asked?
Yes.
Okay.
So as long as she can come back on at the moment that she wants to.
Correct, if I, if you can hear.
Yes, if she's going to speak on this issue or participate in the discussion in any way or vote, we will have to see.
Okay.
Commissioner Waldridge, we're on action item number five, if you're following along.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I said to go ahead, I'm voting, and then I heard Kelly say something, and then I heard Laura say something, and everything, but I said move on without me, I'm just gonna listen in on the beat, because obviously this is not working for me, so.
Okay. Action item number five is a discussion on a first reading. I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the Finance Director and I began discussing the insurance premiums tax during meetings with the Board of Commissioners in preparation for the fiscal year '23 budget. And as we presented last week, we're preserving a number of options to close the projected $3.8 million budget gap, from cost savings and budget cuts to also moderate increases in fees and taxes. You know, we cannot close the budget gap by cuts alone without drastic service delivery cuts and changes. With a modest increase in the insurance premiums tax in line with our neighboring jurisdictions and other communities across the state, we will help ensure long-term financial stability for the city and create revenue streams to accomplish key community priorities, including a new fire station and implementation of the Parks Master Plan and Downtown Master Plan. Tonight, we present to you two choices of raising the insurance premiums tax, one from 6% to 9%, and one from 6% to 10%. As the Finance Director and I discussed with you last week, 2% of that 10% budget, 10% would come off automatically once the new fire station bonds and park project bonds have been paid off. The difference between the two is whether 1% or 2% would go into the general fund for long-term financial stability. And this increase would not go into effect until July 2023. And Finance Director is here, and we're happy to answer any questions that anyone may have as part of this discussion.
I think we reviewed last time how much nearby communities are paying for insurance premium tax, and that I think 10% is about the same as the others, or is it slightly higher?
It varies. Versailles is at 9%, Owensboro is at 10%, Georgetown is at 8%, Covington's at 12%. So there is a variety that's around us.
Surrounding, Lawrenceburg, 8%, Georgetown, 8%, Versailles, 9%, Shelbyville, 5%. So we're just a tad higher than Shelbyville now, but we're under our other neighboring communities that we are often compared to. And I think it makes sense to at least raise the tax to match what surrounding communities are doing, because we are on an uneven playing field. It would be nice to be at least equal to the others that we are compared to. So I'm interested in this at 8%.
Well, seeing that according to state law, we don't have to resolve this until March, right? So others could change during, between now and March, which I would think financially with costs of various things going up, as in spare parts and fuel, that 9% or 10% is still reasonable in comparison, and going through this process is something that doesn't happen that quickly. We wouldn't want to do it more than once in a few years. So I would go for even 10% myself.
One thing I just wanted to point out, and since Alicia's here, we were doing some calculations, because you got to look at a bunch of different ways. You know, 3.8 million is a pretty good chunk of change, and looking at, and we have been working on cost savings and budget cuts, and we will continue to do that. But if you think about when we talk about investment, which I think this commission has done a lot of great work this past year, two TIF districts, you passed an IRB, we're working on paddocks to attract that, the garage is going to be built for Parcels B and C, which will unleash about 60 to 70, 80 million dollars worth of investment. So just to understand, like, what does this mean? What do jobs mean? What does that mean for our, for the budget here in Frankfurt? To generate another, let's say, $2.8 million in property, you need 1.5 billion in assessment. So in order to, if you're looking at property taxes one way, so you need $1.8 billion in new assessment in order to generate 2.8 million. We currently get about 3.3, 3.4 million in property taxes for our revenue, which is a little less than 10% of our total revenue and budget total. If you look at occupational tax or net profits tax, we would need a combination of about $205 million, which would include payroll and net profits, to generate $4 million in new revenue, again, that could be applied to this gap. So that helps you understand where, okay, great, you know, Parcels B and C, we're going to get 80 million, that's going to be wonderful. We've got to do about three of those, two to three of those, in order to, if we solely wanted to rely on investment and economic development and growth. And I think, you know, as the mayor had said, looking, if we compare ourselves to the surrounding communities, the surrounding communities are charging 8, 9, 7, 8, 9% for the insurance premiums tax, they're all charging a solid waste management fee that we are not charging. Nearly all of them are charging, our current 911 fee is a dollar per month per landline. Many of them are charging either between $5 and $10 on water meters or property taxes per month. So other communities around us are looking at this in a different way, and looking at kind of, you know, you want to be diverse in generating revenue. You don't want it to rely only on property or only on, obviously, business and net profit. So I think staff, we have worked hard to try to bring up a diverse set of options that spreads it out among the community, and trying to be as fair and equitable as we can.
Laura, sorry, I don't mean to correct your math, but if you're only talking about 80 million...
That's only about, if you do that, two or three of those, it's only about 240 million.
It'd have to be about...
There would have to be a ton of those to get to 1.5 billion.
Oh, I was talking about 205 million in, oh, payroll property, yeah, never mind.
You're fine.
Yeah. Thank you for correcting my math.
No, no, I just want to clarify, because that's a lot of, that's a lot of assessment, if we were just strictly looking at property tax. And I totally agree with Laura, we need to look at, we need to spread the wealth, so to speak. And I do think that, you know, if you look at, how much would X amount in property assessments generate? Let's talk about getting some more jobs in here or more business. I mean, 205 million dollars is a lot in new business, either through payroll or through net profit. Not, obviously, for the net profit side, it's not revenue they generate, it's the net profit that they make. That's what they pay the 1.95% on, so. And then as Laura mentioned too, it's good to compare ourselves to other communities, but we also have to remember that these other communities are charging for garbage and recycle pickup, and, you know, most of them have a higher E911 fee. That takes money out of our general fund, just the E911 as well. So, you know, I do think that we've provided you with a ton of different things to think about, and insurance premiums tax, you know, that's a, I think, a good way to, as I just said, spread the wealth, because not only do individuals pay that on their policies, but businesses do as well, so. And I will say this too, and my apologies for not bringing this up the last time, I have been told that there might be some insurance premium increases, just in the general inflation part side of things, that insurance premiums may be going up. Now, I don't know for sure on that, I'm no insurance person. And obviously, if premiums go up in that way, then it might allow for a little more collection too, but it won't bridge a 3.8, you know, estimated operating deficit. So I would, you know, that's why I think it'd be a good idea to increase that insurance premiums tax as well, so. Thank you.
Hang tight, okay, Commissioner Unger?
Well, I definitely agree that this is something we need to do. I'm not sold on which percentage I want to go with yet, but I do, I do like that this is an equitable way for us to tax. But one thing that I would like to see, I don't know if it needs to be, if we need to discuss it, or if we would just want to potentially direct staff to do it, but maybe take a percentage of this and put it towards economic development in some way, whether it's bringing someone internally, or whatever we might want to come up with.
I agree with that. I think it's a good idea. I think if, well, if we want to make, with some of this money, we want to invest in the future, and part of that, and we want to grow the pie, so that we don't have to rely so much on taxes and fees, or at least charge a smaller percentage. I think if we could, for some of this, we know we're going to have to build a new fire station. That, in a way, it will support the rest of the community and new businesses, new residents in the downtown South Frankfurt area. But I'd like to also be able to make investments in our Downtown Master Plan and our Parks Master Plan, so that we can attract new residents and new businesses to live here. I think that's the real purpose of any new, because we're going to have to make these investments anyway. And obviously, we haven't been charging enough along the way to do that, so I think it's critical we consider that some of that, what Lisa says, toward economic development, to help grow the pie. And we talked about a position in-house, I think that's something we need to move to the forefront. Maybe this is the way to do it. And I would consider, you know, I like 8% to match surrounding communities, and not go too far above that, but, you know, if somebody gave me a good reason to go to 9, I would, if I knew it was going to something worthwhile, like economic development.
I think that's a good point on economic development, the point that Laura was making too, about bringing in businesses and how much more tax you'd have, but that it has a rolling effect, that those businesses bring in people that buy from other businesses, and we create, you know, more tax income just by the fact that they're here, more than just that business. So I agree with you on economic development, and renewable energy too tied into that, that we need a person who can work on that, and we should bring that forward to make that happen.
Can I ask a question, Mayor? So if you're talking about 8%, are you saying that it would be 1% to the two different projects, or are you saying 8% just straight to the general fund?
I think 8%, and we know what projects we're going to have. I don't know if, I don't know if I'd even want to earmark it towards specific projects. I mean, we could, if we did want to sunset it at some point, where we could say, okay, well, that, let's say, the fire station bond is paid off, then 15 years from now, some future commission, it's automatically going to fall off. I think, I'd rather just start at a percentage, and just, that's the new percentage.
Okay, I was just curious what you meant by that.
That's my, that's my thinking on it, is let's just start with one and in line with other communities. Because we hear that other communities have Because we hear that other communities have certain amenities that we don't, and this is partly the reason.
Because they have a higher rate.
Right, they're charging more.
And they've been charging for a while.
They've been charging more.
So we should go to 9% and catch up?
Yeah, I think so.
And if I may too, I do think with economic development, that is a, that's an area that it may take a little bit of time to see the fruits of the labor of that.
Right, it is a long distance strategy.
Right, so I would just be worried that our reserves would be gone. We need to be careful, we've got the rainy day fund balance, and if you make these small steps now, it might save some headache and heartache down the road when you're trying to make budgets balance with much less revenue than you have in the operating costs, and you're having, having to tap into rainy day fund. And in our policy, it states that we will allow ourselves up to three years to replenish it up to whatever amount it's supposed to be at. But that would be hard on top of already being, your revenue being under, under what your expenses are, so it's a lot to think about, just to throw some more food for thought out there for you guys, so.
The implementation of the projects, once we start collection, once we start getting the money, and we feel confident that we're ready to move forward with how we're designated it, designating said monies, what I'm asking for is a reassurance to everyone who may be watching at home and engaging this conversation, that there is a plan to get a return on the ask, that we are asking the citizens to step up and cover for us. We are prepared to utilize said monies to start seeing that return.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you're wanting to make sure that the money for the projects is set aside and made sure that that goes just for those projects? So I will say that the fire station design's already happening, and I assume, I don't know, Laura may have a timeline on construction on the fire station. And what we can do is, we can set that money aside into their own accounts, because what I would envision is capital projects funds that would be established, because anytime you have a capital project, really, you should have a fund specifically for that, like we do now for Tiger. That was a big, huge undertaking, we had a capital fund for that and a bank account for that. So I know in the ordinance, at least with the fire station, it says to be used toward construction and/or debt service payments. So one thing you could opt to do with part of that money, if we're, if we've got some that's, you know, been collected over time, is to use it to offset some of the construction costs too. And then the money going forward that you collect would be to pay the bond payments. You could do that. Now, that's an option, and then same for downtown master plan and parks plan if you opt for the other 1%. The accounting for it, I'm not really, that doesn't concern me, that'll be, that won't be a big deal, if that's what the public needs to know and to hear, so.
Let's see, Mayor.
Well, just to add to that, you know, I think the city, having taken on the Tiger project and others, that we would be prepared to manage it well and would have the staffing or, you know, if we need to, you know. With Tiger, we had a company who was a project manager, just to make sure that, as a comfort level, that we will hold the people building and implementing these projects accountable, and we'll watch it very closely, make sure that we're good stewards of the money, and that even though there might be some larger projects, several million dollars, that if, you know, if our staff don't have the time, we will make sure that we, we have someone like Chuck Mills, who's been a great wealth and to us, who's just been great on all the projects, someone like him, who will make sure that we are on target and on time and we stay on budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, as the ordinance is on, so we could do a first reading on this tonight, correct? If we chose option A or option B as written?
Oh, A is 9%, B is 10%.
I do want to also offer that if it's the will of the board to focus on economic development, we can come back and do a memo saying, and make some suggestions, and if there's a certain amount or certain things, we can come back, we could have another discussion to make sure that it's going into the areas supportive, which, you know, it's, it's the number one priority in our strategic plan. And we'd be happy to come up with something specific that you guys could review that focuses squarely on economic development.
Well, really, if you're talking about a position, you really don't even necessarily need to do that, other than just establish the economic development position. It's already going to be paid out of the general fund, probably going to be located in the city manager's department. And this, part of this money's going to go into the general fund, so you would carve out just a small piece of that, that would pay for that position, if that's what you chose to do as well.
Well, I think in the past, the city's been successful, I think business really appreciated the grants that were done in 2018, 2019, that helped support the renovation of buildings. We've talked about some facade grants, thinking about historic preservation, you could think about maybe having an incentive like that for certain key buildings, or focused on entrepreneurs, you know, we'd like to support our young entrepreneurs here in the community. There's a lot of great examples of cities that have partnered with banks and other institutions and economic development authorities to start maybe a small fund, or you just do some training for entrepreneurs and how to write a business plan and, and to be supportive of that. Work with KSU, they have some great ag tech programs and people wanting to start businesses, so I think there's a lot of great ideas to support economic development and support people in our community starting businesses.
Well, and then back to Laura's example, that can be-
That doesn't have to be every year, an every year kind of thing either, that could be a one-time expenditure every so often, if you're looking at economic development grants or something of that nature.
But not with this one. I'm talking, we're not giving grants, this is for public investment. And when I say economic, when, what I mean by, I mean, community development and investments in our infrastructure, our parks-
Gotcha.
And downtown master plan, to actually start doing some of these things, we, that look good on paper, and let's start funding these, so that people will want to live here and businesses will want to move here. We have to do our part of this on the public side, and that's what this money's for. But I'd also, I'm saying, I would like to fund a position that would oversee making sure all this happens, just like we have, it's hard to, we need more firepower to get some of these things done.
That was kind of a portion of my question about making sure that we were prepared to, when we have these awesome projects that we now can fund, do we have the personnel and the-
To oversee?
Right, right.
Yeah, gotcha.
You know, how soon would we go out and, let's say, we, we know we're going to generate, if 1% generates $700,000, you know, could we go out, you know, plus or minus, you know, can we go out and then bond, you know, 8.5 million dollars right away? Can we do that? And then just make a big capital investment improvement in our parks or in our downtown, and on our waterfront?
Right.
Imagine that, with the help of others, we hope.
Takes about two months, from what I've been told by our current financial advisors, to put a bond out. So, yeah, you, I mean, I don't, that's just what I was told, like, to advertise and do all that good stuff, so two months for that. Now, obviously, you're looking at finding someone to do the capital projects, and we have to find the, obviously, the financing for it, so it might take a, probably take a little longer than two months, obviously, but, I mean, there would be probably no reason why you couldn't get them started sooner rather than later. But I will say too, though, if I may, Mayor, that part of the discussion of this insurance premiums tax is to help cover a deficit that we know we're going to have in the general fund. So if we start looking at taking the full 2%, that we might say go from 6% to 8%, and apply it toward bond payments, that really, that's not going to help with that problem. So I think if you're interested in capital projects, then I would make sure that you pick one of, obviously, both these options are good, in that at least 1% and then up to 2% would be general fund revenues, that would help the city going forward to be financially sound. And then do the other 1% or 2%, depending on what you choose, on those economic development projects that you're interested in, which are very, that's a very legitimate, obviously, idea and a good concern to have, and so that would be my only thing to say about that.
And if, if 2% went into the general fund, that's about 1.4 million?
Roughly, I mean, it could be a little bit more if, what I've been told about insurance premiums tax, or, I'm sorry, insurance premiums go up a little, but that was just based on what we collected in fiscal year '22, doing the math on that to, to figure out if we had an 8% rate versus a 6% rate, what would we get? And my calculation was roughly about 1.4 million more.
I thought Commissioner May's point about increasing tax, but actually saying, here's where we're spending it, like the fire station, where people can say that increase in tax went to something I can see, and I think that's good. But I agree too with Alicia that we just need more money for the general fund.
I know, just speaking as a private citizen, I'm obviously not a citizen of Frankfurt, I'm a citizen of Franklin County although, but I'm a citizen of Franklin County, I do like the idea of being able to have a tangible project, like the fire station, for instance, to say, we're doing this because it's, well, it's needed. I know the study that was provided to you guys maybe last year proves that there is a need for a fire station, and, and the citizens of Frankfurt, you know, can see that. And it would be sunsetted out, the way it's written in the ordinance for that, and then actually for those other projects too, should we have, should you decide to do that, because we wouldn't, you know, obviously, we can get rid of those once those projects are completed, but I, I think that's a good idea, to have a sunset clause in those, so.
Commissioner Waldridge, can you hear us? Do you want an input on the insurance premiums tax?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, if I don't get out, um, yeah, you know, I sort of agree with Commissioner Unger in, that, you know, we do need to push this to a nine. I don't know where the conversation that has just led, the questions discussed came from, because we have to be very cognizant and very aware of what, if we're going to raise taxes, of where those dollars are going to go, and not just think about personal things that we're wanting to push forward in this town, if we're, if we continue-
Okay, now we can-
We continue to, are you there?
Yeah.
Nope.
If you're not.
Can't see you.
Any other, Robbie White? So there's nine, maybe, is there a room?
Well, putting it towards, I think the other 1% was towards the parks master plan, and we do have tangible visuals of that, the Dolly Graham Park turned out really well, and moving on to other parks, I think people would relate to that.
That's, that, that I can get behind, the parks master plan and the downtown master plan. Well, we were, we could do a first reading on one of these, if any, if there's a will to go to nine or 10. Or we could table it and come back at the work session in December, and then perhaps do a second reading at the voting session.
Could we table this and come back to a little bit more discussion? Can you hear, can you hear Laura?
We can.
We're good.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't know if we even need to table it, do we? If it's not, we don't have a motion.
No, we don't have to.
So, but unless there's, unless, unless somebody wants to do it, do a motion, or we don't need a motion.
Okay, I'd be happy to do a motion to say, let's go ahead with the 9% and do a first reading at this time, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to proceed with option A, which is the 9%, increasing from 6% to 9%, as written here. So any discussion on this?
I would like to make it clear that I would like a portion of the general fund to go towards an internal position, but we can discuss it later if we need to.
I just, I don't think, I don't think, I don't know, I just think that it should be tabled to know what this 9% or a 10% could possibly do for Franklin.
Well, we know the percentage, I mean, we know what that number is.
As an economic development person, we've already said in our system and to our community, we are not hiring anyone right now because of our deficit. Hiring an economic development person, hiring an assistant manager, and all these things are going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, plus, and it's, plus all of these things. If we don't have a clear focus for an economic development director, we're going to bring that person in and do what? Again, we've asked for a plan, or we're going to do a plan. If we don't have a plan for it, why are we planning for it? Right now, what we need to be planning is, is the first time ever a 1% is going into a parks plan to continue to finally put our, where our parks need to be, and not allowing them to fall behind as they have many, many years in the past. This is why we are where we are, is because of neglected parks, and they need more than just a general budget line, they need money that is coming in consistently from somewhere. And if taxpayers are paying that 1% to go into our parks, then they expect pristine parks that they can use year-round.
So, okay, along those lines, in the ordinance, so it does, if 1% is going to the downtown and parks master plans, so that, that is in there, 1% will go to the general fund, 1% to the new fire station. So if you all are happy with that?
I am. And the discussion about economic development, I mean, that's an ongoing interest in, that's part of the general fund.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. I'm going to ask our city attorney.
Sure, so-
If we vote, then, then you're going to read the first reading?
That's right, so you all are just voting whether or not to even have a first reading at this point.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask our court to call for a vote to see whether or not we want to have a first reading on this 9%.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Can't hear you.
Oops, can you see on mute?
You're on mute.
We can't hear you.
Commissioner Waldridge, if you can hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Is this the first reading on just the 9%? Or is this the reading of something about an economic development director that's come out of that building?
Just the 9%.
Yes, I will say yes to the 9%.
And I'll go along with the rest and say yes, and so we will now, so that motion carries, so now we have a first reading of an ordinance looking, seeking a sponsor.
An ordinance amending the city of Frank-
Commissioner Unger's going to sponsor.
Oh, I'm so sorry? Yes, okay. An ordinance amending the city of Frankfurt insurance premium tax rate and requirements. This ordinance amends Section 111.37 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances related to premium taxes on insurance companies, to, one, change the amount of the license fee from 6% to 9%, two, require that 7% of the fee be designated as general government revenue, and 1% be designated and restricted to costs associated with the new fire station, and 1% be designated and restricted to costs associated with current and future capital projects outlined in the downtown and parks master plans. Three, require that each 1% designated to future, I'm sorry, 1% require that each 1% designated be removed, and the total fee be reduced as applicable after all financial obligations have been met. And four, update throughout to clarify and comply with the governing statutory language, including exemptions and deadlines.
And thank you, city manager and our finance director, for putting together a plan that, well, you try to make us all happy.
You're welcome to, thank you.
Act Number Six? Action item number six?
Staff is seeking approval from the Board of Commissioners for the Parks Department to surplus an employee, an old employee house at Cove Springs. The modular home located there at the park is very dated, needs lots of repair, so, and it's not livable, so we'd like to surplus it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Unger, and the second by Commissioner May. Any discussion on this surplus order? Seeing, hearing none. Clark, we call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich? Mayor Waukerson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And that motion carries. Action item number seven, Exum Center.
Yes, I want to thank Laura Ross for working very closely and very quickly with Kentucky State University, Franklin County Fiscal Court, and YMCA to make this MOU and resolution happen. The MOU is forming a working group, a collaborative working group, for the Exum Center to turn it into a, to renovate for a world-class facility. And the resolution states that the City of Frankfurt is willing to commit $1 million in line with the Fiscal Court commitment of $1 million towards the overall renovation of Exum Center. And that this would then supersede any commitment to, of the 2.5 million towards a new Y, and that the YMCA would operate this new facility.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion, Commissioner Waldrich, second, Commissioner Unger, any discussion?
Yes, I think that agreeing to this, this new plan means that we have given up on the Y in downtown Frankfurt. And I think that is an important economic driver for downtown. And by shifting to not doing that, it sounds like from discussions that the Y has given up on that, which is a concern to me because the Y is now part of Lexington Group. And so Lexington's saying Frankfurt can never pull together to have a Y downtown with a swimming pool. And we're agreeing with that by agreeing to this, this motion.
Commissioner Unger?
Well, I think it's a very positive thing. And I want to thank everybody who has come together for the meetings from the city, county, state government, as well as K-State. Shows that we can work together as a team. We want to make sure that the Exum Center is amazing, not only for Kentucky State, but hopefully the city. And I think pulling in the YMCA to help is amazing. So I just want to say I'm fully behind it. And I think hopefully we can see this turnaround pretty fast. And I would love to be able to walk up the Thoroughbred Trail and go to the gym and work out in the future, so.
And Commissioner Rosen, I hear your concerns because I was there for a while, I really, you know, and I still have hope for some facility downtown to support. We hope there are going to be 100, 200 new residents down there. And I live down there myself. But I think that this is an opportunity where you have a new YMCA with the cost of construction now is so much greater than possibility of helping a university that needs help in fixing up an existing property. I mean, they have a building there already that's three times the size of what we were going to build downtown anyway. And it's already, the structure's there. And this is also an opportunity for, to further tie in the university with the city and the county, and the state's on board with this too. The state thinks this is a great idea. So I think it's, it's an opportunity to get something in use sooner for, including a pool, for our community and still have the possibility of some type of facility downtown. But the reality is, it was going to be a heavy lift to raise that much money.
So, a couple of other things I've thought about is KSU hasn't done very well at maintenance. And the Y gave up on their building, so maintenance is a question there too. So we put money into this, is it going to be maintained? Can we expect it to be a good investment?
Well, that's our hope. And that's, and I think that part of this would be, and the next few months are gonna, that's where the details are going to be worked out. What we're doing today is just signing a, an MOU to set up that group that's going to work out those details. And personally, I would want the YMCA to be in charge of maintaining and running not only the programs, but the building itself.
And we've also already given $30,000, so would that be subtracted from the $1 million?
I suppose we could talk about that, yes.
And if I just can, just to clarify with the resolution a little bit, it, it does say we are pledging $1 million because, because that is an opportunity for you all to make it clear that that's the intent. However, it does have contingencies, again, as, as the City Manager said, you know, we're looking at this, we would not be, this is not committing us to $1 million done deal. This is saying if the county also contributes the $1 million that they have said they would, if the collaborative successfully completes its goals and provides a proposal and a finished product that everyone is happy with and approves, this governing body would still have to come back together and approve an agreement, a funding agreement, approve the results of the collaborative. All of these things would need to fall into place. So there is an ability, if you all aren't happy with the success of the project, this is not committing you, no matter what, to the $1 million. It's saying, it's pledging commitment to move forward, but it's not a, not an end-all be-all if it's not what you all want.
I'm concerned too that, reading through the OMU, it says that they won't even have assessed the pool until July of next year. I mean, that's, that's the goal. And that's taking, you know, we gave them the money July 14th, or the MOU for that. So it's taking more than a year to get to just assessing the pool. And that's the best we can expect?
Well, there's also, staff have left Kentucky State University who were in charge of going through the state system. You've got to use a state-approved vendor. And when they have left, they haven't hired for people's replacement. There's been a lot of changes. But when we did that, you know, looking at the timeline, so the goal is between January and July that that would get done, that we form the group first and then they can move forward. But that's, one of the challenges is that some key staff members have, have left. And, but I believe, in speaking with President Johnson, he's fully committed. He was the first one to sign on the MOU, and I see that he really wants to make it happen. I think he'll make it happen.
I, I hear you though, and I think it's, but it is an opportunity. And right now, it's our fastest, it's, it's the fastest path forward to getting anything indoors.
Well, I think too of parcels B and C and how that agreement was set by the state, which is kind of being set by the state. And it wasn't in the best interest of the City of Frankfurt. Other solutions might have been better. And so here we are again in the same situation.
Well, this collaborative, as the city attorney has said, will come up with an agreement that this body will approve. So it's not, it's not the state telling us an agreement to approve. It's that working group that will have representatives from the city and the county, from Kentucky State and-
Y.
And the YMCA, who are going to work together to come up with an agreement. So it will, it will have to work for us because you all will have to approve it.
And the Y has no financial tie-in to it, the way the city and the county do?
Well, we don't know yet.
Oh, you can drive, I don't, we don't know.
We don't know yet, nor about, nor the state either. We don't, that hasn't been determined yet. Any other discussion? All of us are, wait, we have a motion, we have a motion and we have a second. Clark, we please call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
No, because I think it takes away from the emphasis of trying to work with downtown.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich? Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes, yes.
That counts.
I think that counts.
Double yes. Yes, half a face. Mayor Waukerson?
And I'm a yes, and that motion carries. And before we go into executive session, we have any other business? New or old?
I would just give a community update on some of the things that you guys have spoken, been speaking about. I will give my update at the next meeting, nor something else, because I keep cutting in and out because I do have things to say, but I don't want to prolong the meeting just because I keep cutting in and out. So I'll give an update in older new business next week.
Okay.
I just have one thing concerning our resolution towards renewable energy. And I'm not sure that asking Gary to come and speak to us about where the Plant Board lies, I'm wondering if maybe John Cubine or the Board, because we have, you know, we appoint the Board and we have expectations from them to work with the city on projects and so to understand where they are positioned with our resolutions towards renewable energy. And maybe asking them or John Cubine, whatever makes sense, to come and talk to us about how they see the future.
Okay. At the December work session, we're looking at that, right?
Yes, correct.
I have spoken to Gary. And for, in particular, people wanted to learn about Ashwood. It also depends on when that final deal is completed. And then once that deal is completed, he can speak more freely about it since it's currently, they were discussing in executive session. We can ask them both, John Cubine and Gary, to go speak.
My focus is really how the Plant Board can help us with the resolution. So broadly or narrowly, however they want to reply.
Any other, other business? I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mayor will make a motion to go into executive session per KRS 61.8101F. Personnel to discuss candidates which might need an appointment to the fire chief position. Action may be taken in open session.
One second.
Good, motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we're in the executive session. Thank you all for coming.